Marion County School Board is called to order. Dr. Gullett, would you please read our commitment statement?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good evening. It would be my pleasure to do that. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the evening, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
This is Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2. Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Throer, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Yes.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jerry Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Kevin Christian, Director, Public Relations and Multimedia Productions, please introduce who will be providing us with the pleasure of the inspiration and pledge tonight.
Good evening to each of you. It's my honor to share the introduction of two people with you tonight. First of all, Ms. Diana Scroggy, you are familiar with her with the Public Education Foundation. She's the program director for Take Stock in Children. And she has with her one of our high school seniors from Bellevue High School. You may not know her yet, but you have heard about her. Her name is Valeria Alfonso Molina, and I'm going to steal a little bit of Diana's thunder here. But Valeria is the student who won statewide the high school portion of the Black History Essay Writing Contest that we shared last month on our website and with our community, the top essay writer in the state at the high school level. The best part, she has a four-year college scholarship because of that one essay. So I'm going to ask Diana to come over, and Valeria, if you will join her, please.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone, for having us tonight. I am not going to speak long because Valeria is so amazing, as Kevin just shared, and I want her to be able to share her inspiration with you guys tonight, and then she's also going to say the pledge. She is one of 50 graduates for Take Stock in Children this year. It's been an honor to work with these students. These are the seniors that were juniors last year when the pandemic began, and they have been so resilient through last spring, moving through this year with all of the uncertainty. And, you know, the college process was not easy this year. There was a lot up in the air, and kids, you know, were really unsure about how to go through everything. And I'm so proud of all of them. I am particularly proud of Valeria. She is amazing. She is tenacious, and anyone at Bellevue High School will tell you that, but tenacious in the best way. She's going to share a little bit of her story, and it has not been particularly easy for her to navigate the college process. And in the end, she has come out on top. She applied for every scholarship she could possibly apply for on top of her Take Stock. And like Kevin shared, she won the statewide Black History Month Essay Contest and was honored by Florida's First Lady, Ms. DeSantis. And I like to say that we recognize that she was our outstanding Senior of the Year through Take Stock before that award, but I'm so excited that the state knows how amazing and outstanding she is as well. So without further ado, this is Valeria.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me here. When I started my academic career here, I never imagined that I would be able to stand here in front of you. And I am so thankful for all of this, for all of the opportunities, and for everything that's been wonderful in this country, all the amazing teachers, principals, and staff members at Bellevue Middle and Bellevue High School and at Take Stock. Although I was born and raised in Valencia, Venezuela, I had to move to the U.S. when I was 13 because of the political and humanitarian crisis going on there. My mother and my grandmother, both well-educated, always taught me the importance of getting an education, so I have always worked hard to get my academic career to the highest levels possible. However, when I moved here, I was not familiar with the American educational system, let alone the college admission process. Even so, about five months after coming here, I was blessed to get an interview from Take Stock. And there, I have met wonderful people, wonderful people. And our selfless mentors have been excellent by always being there for us and caring for us like we are their own family members. The staff and mentors have directed us to precious resources and ways to navigate the system and to overcome any financial or financial barriers or any misinformation about the system, because it can get tricky, but they have done an outstanding job at helping us out so we can have the best future possible. Thanks to Take Stock, I have successfully overcome many strategic and financial limitations to go to college. And now I am fortunate to say that I am committed to UF, which has been my dream school ever since I moved here. Nothing of this would have been possible without Bellevue Middle School and High School and Take Stock and Take Stock's encouragement and support. And one day, I wish to give back to all of them. They have provided me the resources and the education of a lifetime. Now it is time for the pledge. Please stand up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for having me.
Valeria, just wanted to, on behalf of the whole board, congratulate you on the enormous work that you put in to get where you are today. You definitely had the tenacity and the fierceness of a gator.
Thank you.
So best of luck to you.
Thank you so much.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Christians is back to introduce the individuals to be recognized for the 2020-2021 High School Voter Registration Challenge winners.
Having been inspired by Valeria and her pursuit of citizenship and excellence in education, part of the education process is ensuring that our students become productive citizens, every student, every day. Hopefully, that sounds familiar to you. I'm honored tonight to introduce our supervisor of elections, Mr. Wesley Wilcox. With him is Sterling Arden, who is the Outreach Services Contact for the Supervisor of Elections here in Marion County. Also, we have Elizabeth Brown, the Principal of Forest High School, and Mr. Stephen Hill, who is a social studies teacher at Forest High School. We're honored because somebody's won another award, and Mr. Wilcox is here to present that.
Fantastic.
First off, I would like to thank you for your involvement in this process. Dr. Gullett, as well as the members of the school board, without your participation and without your involvement in this process, it would not be what it is today. Voter registration through the high school mechanisms have been there in statutes for years. But when we started this program about four years ago, your complete 100% buy-in to this process has been instrumental in its success. So I want to, first off, thank you very much. So furthermore, this, as mentioned, this is our fourth year at doing this, and I will tell you, even though the year that we had, this has been the most successful of the four years that we've done that. I do think there's one compelling reason for that, which I'll get to in just a quick moment. But it's been an extraordinary year. As you guys know, the pandemic and all of the other obstacles put in front of us made it a very difficult process. So most of the voter registration activities that we did this year were online-type activities. We prefer the in-person type stuff, but we did the online. We did a lot of pre-recorded messages. It took a lot of buy-in from your employees, your teachers, their commitment to this process, and so we greatly appreciate that. So this is our fourth year. If you don't mind, I would like to have a couple of people come up here with me. This is, if you will, please come on up, Mr. Hill and Mrs. Brown. This is especially nice for me, although I'm not a native of Marion County. All three of my children are native Forest High School graduates, two of them being in Mr. Hill's class over the years. So I know Mr. Hill in a good way. Well, one son, you don't know, but it's pretty good. So it is my distinct honor to present the Fourth Annual High School Voter Registration Challenge Award to Forest High School. Mrs. Brown or Mr. Hill? Thank you. If you want to say a few words. Oh, well, let's thoroughly do this, and we'll turn it over.
Thank you all for your unparalleled support during this year. As Wesley had mentioned, it would not have been possible without you. Thank you both for your buy-in and for all the work you do for our students in helping us register and educate our future voters. So congratulations once again. We'll do a photo.
And we'll get a photo outside.
Thank you.
I would just like to mention the lead American government teacher at Forest High School, Julie Long. She laid out a game plan to pursue this this year, and she executed it, and the students responded to it. So here we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Another quick side note on this. It did come to my attention that there may have been a little sibling rivalry in this process as well. If I know one of my teachers or one of the teachers here possibly had a sibling in another high school. So not only did we have the challenge that we put on, little internal family stuff. So we need to take a picture and send it to his brother. We're in good shape. All right. Thank you very much.
That's wonderful. And before you all walk away, I just, again, on behalf of the board, wanted to thank all of you for protecting and encouraging the right to vote here in the United States of America. I don't think there's really anything more important than that. So appreciate it very, very much. Thank you. And moving on to Ms. Rebecca Rora, Director of Transportation, who will be coming forward and introducing the individuals to be recognized for their donation to the Transportation Department. Sounds like they may have to get through the crowd.
Yes.
Good evening. Come on down.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for having us out to share the great news that we've been doing here in transportation. And at this time, as Director, I want to let Julie Moore, who is our Transportation ESE Liaison, lead out in this, because she has been very instrumental in getting this together, along with Chair Throer.
I see someone else in the audience that probably needs to step up.
I apologize, but I'm going to have to read so I don't forget something that I want to say. Good evening, Chair Throer, Vice Chair King, board members, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Elena Martinez Lopez. We are honored to be here to recognize two organizations in our community as well as our bus aides. Mr. Dinkins, Mr. Brad Dinkins, is the owner of Fidelity Manufacturing, among many other entities. And Ms. Jessica Cole is here tonight representing Fitness and Nutrition in Schools, also known as FANS, and the Active Marion Project, you may know as AMP. We recently reached out to Mr. Dinkins and asked if he would be interested in supporting a training initiative for our bus aides by providing them each with a T-shirt, and he gladly jumped on board and was happy to be a part of that. Our own behavior support team created a training moodle on proactive strategies and de-escalating behaviors on the school bus. Upon completion of the training, every bus aide has or will receive their T-shirt. We have three bus aides here tonight, each representing the zone they work in. Ms. Natalie Howard from Zone 1, Ms. Carmen Diaz from Zone 3, and Ms. Linda Davis from Zone 4. And on behalf of Ms. Rora and our entire team, we want to thank you for all you do for kids and dedicating yourselves to serving them. Turn around and show them the back of your shirt. So it says "Aid" on the back, and "Assist, Interact, Distract, and Encourage." Last but not least, the Marion County Hospital District. A little over a year ago, I reached out to Ms. Heather Wyman, the Community Projects Director, and asked if her organization would be interested in helping us with a busy bus bag project. I have one here. She loved the idea and without hesitation jumped on board. She donated 200 bags, which is enough for one for every ESE bus route in our district and some extra, and also offered to help us get the bags filled. Ms. Wyman had a prior obligation this evening, so Ms. Cole is here representing the organizations. Have to add that many others have reached out along the way to help with the busy bus bag project since it was only an idea. It has been two years in the making, and we hope to be able to execute it in August at the start of the 21-22 school year. There have been monetary donations as well as donations of items for the bags, from books to blankets to small toys, fidgets, sensory items, et cetera. The goal is to provide our team with the tools and resources they need to help them execute the acronym on the back of the shirt. Mr. Dinkins, Ms. Cole, thank you both for your generosity. These items have been a blessing to our bus aides and I know will be a blessing to our special needs bus riders. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If you wouldn't mind just showing quickly some of the items that are in the bus bag and what they're designed for.
So this is just, it's books, it's soft things, obviously. They are items that are maybe, if thrown or tossed on a school bus, are soft and won't injure somebody or won't go very far. Obviously, what will go into each particular bus bag would be handpicked for the students on that particular route. You have to really know your students to know what items will keep them occupied and busy, content, what will soothe some of their needs. But some of this stuff is very sensory for some of our students, maybe with autism or that have sensory disorders. There are books to read, and this is all from donations, not even what we've specifically purchased through FANS and AMP, like a small dry erase board. If you have a student that that would occupy and you know they won't be drawing all over the seats and the windows kind of thing. And really, we had the bags. Well, she said yes. Ms. Wyman said, yes, I would love to do that. How many bags do you need? The last day before spring break last year, and then we went through the shutdown, and we've just really waited this year because there was already so much extra put on our bus teams with COVID that we didn't want to add more work and stress to the mix. So we kind of held off on that, but hopefully, we can roll it out in August.
Absolutely, absolutely. And on behalf of the board, it is just such a wonderful collaboration. Our kids, a lot of our kids have very long bus rides, sometimes more than an hour. So for them to be able to ride the bus successfully and happily and arrive to school and home in a frame of mind that is positive and calm and where they feel encouraged is a big piece of our success as a school district, I believe. So these are terrible puns, but I'm going to go ahead and say it, because we are fans of the Marion County Public Schools Transportation Department, and we are amped for this partnership going forward. So thank you so much, all of you. God bless you. And thank you to the bus aides. How many years of experience do we have right here?
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-four.
Okay. Thank you so much, ladies, for everything that you do every day for our kids. Take good care. Mr. Dinkins?
She asked if I'd like to say something.
I'm so glad.
So I'd like to say that I've gotten to know Nancy Throer and what a privilege and an honor it is to know her. She's the one that, you know, asked me if I'd contribute, and I'm willing to do more in different ways, you know, financially or otherwise. So I watched a meeting for the first time in my life, trying to find out a little bit about Nancy and about the board and about our new superintendent. And I just want you to know, I am thrilled because you folks are uniders and not dividers, and you're team players. There may be some difference in policy, but it'll be handled in a civil way. And I just want you to know, I for one am very grateful for that. And also, I want to thank each and every one of you for voting Diane Gullett in as our superintendent. One fine lady, and I mean that, I mean in so many different ways. So I believe that the Lord has blessed us in this town with y'all and with her, and great and mighty things are going to be happening even more and more and more as we move forward. Amen.
Yes, sir. The sky's the limit. Amen.
Last thing, this caught my attention, and I appreciate you all allowing it to come in here. The first thing that it says right on here is "Only God." I read that thing, and I said, oh, man, that's nice. Amen.
Right, amen.
She deserves a special award. It's 25 years.
I know.
I bet you're real patient, aren't you?
Or really impatient.
She wouldn't have lasted that long.
Yes, by the grace of God, go all of you. And if any of the ladies would like to say anything, and I'd love to acknowledge you, Ms. Cole as well, but I don't like to put anyone on the spot, and you know that we love you, we care about you. Representing with my bus, I try to do that pretty often. We all see you, we all hear you, we all appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Cole, please.
Yes, I will just say it's an honor and a privilege to be here. I know I can definitely speak for the Marion County Hospital District. We are always honored to support the school system. So thank you very much. It's an honor.
Yes, and we are blessed with your partnership. Thank you again. All right, everybody, take care. Now we have to get down to business. Superintendent Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Always hard to follow that. I recommend approval of the agenda for the May 11, 2021, School Board Meeting with the materials in the Board Packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of C. 13.1 that has been placed under discussion.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell, seconded by Vice Chair King. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 9, 2021, School Board Meeting?
A move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 10, 2021 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Same.
Moved by Vice Chair King, seconded by Board Member Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion, aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Ms. Megan Magamol, Public Education Foundation Officer, would like to recognize the new business partners with Marion County Public Schools. Magamol can make her way in.
Good afternoon, School Board members, and thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to present recognition for our newest school business partner, Mr. Mel Poole from Ocala Fiber Network. So the foundation works to connect children, classrooms, and community, and one of the best ways that we can connect our business community is through our school business partnerships. I'm happy to say thank you for being here this evening. Mr. Kevin Shealy, CEO and President of the CEP, and Director of Talent Development from the CEP, Dean Blinkhorn, who help us with the initiatives for those school partnerships that are so crucial to the success in our schools. This year alone, the foundation has provided 130,000 in school business partnership funds to our schools. Our business partner, Ocala Fiber Network, is not new to this partnership because they already are partners with three schools. Those schools are Lake Weir Middle, North Marion Middle, and Marion Oaks Elementary. But recently, Mr. Poole reached out through the CEP, made the connection with our foundation, and discussed, well, what about those schools that don't have business partners? And said, we are going to now be business partners with three additional schools. So Ocala Fiber Network is a business partner with six of Marion County Public Schools. We cannot say thank you enough for that support, Mr. Poole.
That is wonderful. Absolutely wonderful.
We have our principals representing the newest school business partnerships that are here with us this evening. We have Dr. N.H. Jones, Principal Huell. We have Dunellen Elementary, Principal English, and then Sunrise Elementary, Principal Robledo. And we're recognizing Mel Poole and Ocala Fiber Network this evening, not just for these new business partnerships. He was also nominated as the Commissioner's Business Partner of the Year for Marion County Public Schools. So that is a nomination so well-deserved. Congratulations. We do have some official plaques, and while I go and get those to hand out, I'm going to let our principal, Robledo, say a few words of thanks.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Elena Martinez Lopez. Well, this is the first time in 15 years, at least 15 years, that Sunrise has had a business partner. So I'm ecstatic. I'm like, yay, finally! So we are very excited to start a business relationship with Mr. Poole and Ms. Ramos at Ocala Fiber Network. Student and staff recognition, as well as campus beautification, are some of the ideas that we have that are now possible because of this partnership. So a very heartfelt thank you to Ocala Fiber Network. Thank you. The Public Ed Foundation and the CEP for making this possible.
Hi, I'm Karen English, Principal of Dunellen Elementary School, and we've been out without a business partner for two years. So we were very excited to have a phone call from the Public Education letting us know that they had found us a business partner. So a big thank you to the Public Education, to CEP, and to Ocala Fiber Network. We appreciate it, and we look forward to a great relationship as we move forward.
Good evening. I'm Mrs. Poole, the principal at Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary, and we are very excited to have you as a business partner. We have a long history of support at Dr. N.H. Jones, but as our years go on, our kids move on and graduate and go to middle school and high school, and some of those kids, all the families have all gone on to middle and high school. So we were left without a business partner, so we are very excited that we now have one to help with our STEAM initiative here at Dr. N.H. Jones as a magnet school here in Ocala to support our students and our staff on campus. So thank you for being our business partner, and thank you for allowing us this opportunity.
Mr. Poole, this is your official plaque. Mr. Poole, this is your official plaque saying congratulations. So he has two of these now. So here are the three new school business partners and your principals who, on behalf of our foundation, our school board member, our school district, the CEP, and the students who are going to benefit from this partnership, which is what it is all about. We are grateful. Thank you.
Mr. Poole, I hope you'll say a couple of words too. If you'd be supporting anything, you've chosen to support us.
It is a pleasure to build partnership with the school board. But let me say thanks to Kevin and Dean. Without them, I had no idea. And let me say thank you to you as the board and my city council board. Without you guys, that team, this partnership probably would have been a little bit different. We have a business relationship, as you know, with the school board and the city, providing fiber connectivity to all of the schools. That being said, that money is kept here. So do we do it? We recycle it, and here we are, business partners for our future, the kids. And that, to me, is what it's all about. I guess one of my goals would be to not have any schools without a business partner. So slowly but surely, I'm trying to bite off at that elephant. And hopefully other business partners will indulge in that same venture that I'm on or we're on as the City of Ocala. So on behalf of the city manager, Sandra Wilson, we appreciate doing business with you, and we hope to continue that business relationship. And thanks for all you do for the kids. It's been a challenging year. And if I may, I'm just going to put a plug in for Mr. Cummings here. He and I, during the pandemic, did a little, I don't know what you call it, brainstorm of how can we keep the kids in school, at least, keep the education in mind, flowing the juices flowing. So we got together and kind of pow-wowed and figured, hey, why not do some Wi-Fi at some selected schools? So we got together and teamed up, and I think it was eight schools. We kind of put some APs at, at least the students could get to the schools and at least get connected. So that was another way of giving back to the school board and the students, which is our most important and precious resource. So one other full disclosure, I am a little boy. I was at N. H. Jones years and years ago. So I'm going to shut up now. Thank you. And it's a pleasure doing business with everyone.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
Before Mr. Poole goes, because he's being very humble with this, they have been community partners with many of our schools. So I thank you for that. But last year, when COVID hit and we shut down, we were in a rough situation when it came to having access, Wi-Fi access, to all of the students in Marion County. So I thank Mr. Poole and Ocala Fiber Network for partnering with us. So this is not a new partnership. I want everybody to understand that. They have been doing this, and we went out to the rural areas and made sure that those kids that were in the rural areas had access to continue their education through this pandemic. So I didn't get a chance to tell you publicly. I want to tell you thank you again to your team. We had Anthony Clark, who's here, then our tech guy that was there, Mr. McIntyre. And we just sat over at the old forest, old MTI, MTI, and brainstormed until we got it right. And that's why our kids were able to have Wi-Fi access throughout the summer. So thank you. And again, thank the City of Ocala for that.
Absolutely, sir. It takes that type of vision and commitment to each child to bring something like this to fruition. So what a great example all of you are setting for the community and how wonderful it's becoming to build these partnerships and nurture them. Can't thank you enough.
And we got some more schools now, if you want some.
Why stop now? Okay, we're down to seven. Okay, all right. And Mr. Blinkhorn, Mr. Shealy, do you have anything for the good of the group? I always love to hear from you two.
We're just always excited. It's about partnerships.
Yep, got to go to the microphone.
It's about partnerships. That's what makes this community special. We understand how to partner, business, government, schools, everyone coming together. When we work together, great things happen, and this is a wonderful way to symbolize that. So we're always glad we're going to find those other seven businesses.
Thank you.
Mel can ask someone, but we're going to find some other businesses to be a part of that as well. Thank you all.
All your friends. Thank you. Okay, moving on to persons requesting to address the board. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight. Good evening, Attorney Powers.
Good evening, Chair Thrower. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of those procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the board's secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to these procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless a statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address any concerns you may have. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families is also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers.
Thank you.
Secretary Martinez Lopez, how many speakers do we have tonight?
We have 10.
10. And are the bulk of them on the same topic?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that we limit the time to three minutes instead of five minutes.
So you're asking to limit time to three minutes instead of five minutes? Okay, do we have consensus?
That's right. They're all on the same topic?
Most of them. More than half are on the same topic.
The only thing is, is when they're not on the same topic, then we're...
Right. Well, if they're on the same topic, they can be three minutes, and the ones that are singles could be five.
Yes.
Shall we do that? Okay, so that is the consensus that the bulk that are on the same topic shall have three minutes, and the individual topics will have five.
So that I know which topic is it that the bulk are?
Masks.
Masks, okay.
Should we bulk those first? And then that way, our timer will be able to do three minutes and then switch over to five. Okay, all right, let's go.
Ms. Lucy Sullivan.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to speak on behalf of the children regarding masks. And I also wanted to thank you for taking on this labor of love. It's the Lord's work whenever you're guiding, protecting, helping children. Thank you for doing that for Marion County. I've mentioned this before, and I'm going to do it again because I think it's a very important topic. The wearing of masks is very unnatural, and the children have been doing it for quite a long time. We were created to breathe in oxygen and expel carbon dioxide. With masks, that procedure is inhibited. Our bodies, our brains, need oxygen, a good amount of it, in order to function at optimal level. These children are studying, they're reading, you're asking them to sit still, but they're wearing masks, and it inhibits that, the process. Then also consider that masks are chewed on, sneezed into, dropped, put in dirty book bags, and they're unsanitary. So they've been doing this for months and months now, and I would request that you would please put an end to these masks starting now, for the children's sake. There are remedies for COVID, and they are in the very, very demographic that suffers very little from COVID. So I am just requesting, on behalf of the children, free them from the masks. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Tracy Okus.
Good evening to all of you. It's nice to be here. Appreciate you all very much. This has been very enlightening. I appreciate it. My name is Tracy Okus, O-K-U-S. It is an unusual name. My address is 846 Southeast 14th Avenue, Ocala, Florida, 34471. My three children attended Ocala Public Schools, all graduated from Forest. I am also a graduate of Forest High School. And now three of my precious grandchildren attend 8th Street, Osceola, and Forest. I'm here to share my feelings about the masking of my grandchildren, Clay, Walker, and Kate, and all of the students in Marion County. Very passionate about it. I know when the lockdowns first happened, many of us fell in line with the mask mandates. However, some of us, at some point, realized that the masks don't work the way we've been told because of the size of the COVID molecule and the poor size of the mask. I've read over and over and over again, many times, that it's like trying to keep a mosquito out with a chain link fence. You get the picture. Approximately 43,000 students in our community have been covering their faces all day, every day, for up to seven hours a day for this entire school year. Makes me very sad, sad, when I go to pick up my grandchildren, and these children have been wearing these masks all day. And I do appreciate, I do believe that last week you made the decision to allow them to remove their masks from the playground. It's awesome. And maybe for car line if the administrators agree to that. I appreciate that. And in my opinion, the masks give a false sense of security. The science shows we've been lied to about the efficacy of masking. It's not normal, it's not healthy, and it's not fair, in my opinion, which is my opinion. Do you know the COVID survival rate for people ages 0 to 19? Do you know what it is? CDC reports the COVID survival rate for children and young adults 0 to 19 is 99.997 percent. Really close to 100 percent. We are a group of above-average intelligence people in this room, and we can think for ourselves. We can put two and two together, come up with four. And it's, in my opinion, and I believe I speak for literally thousands of other parents in Marion County, when I say that parents should have the freedom to decide whether their children wear a mask in school. It should be up to them. I'm speaking for the children who can't speak for themselves. And please, I implore you to put students first, make masks optional for the next school year, unmask our children, my grandchildren, and all of their friends, and all the 43,000, if they so choose. If the parents want to put them in masks, they should be able to do that. I agree. I think it's the right, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Mr. Harry Gibbene?
Pardon? He's out. He was in the lobby. When I came in, he was.
Gibbene?
Rock.
Mr. Gibbene, you were not in here earlier when I explained to...
I heard you.
Okay, excellent. Please state your name and address and spell your name.
I'm Harry, better known as Rock Gibbene, 547 Northeast 45th Terrace, Ocala.
Thank you.
Lifetime resident, born here, went to school here, all my family has. As you know, the city council has, their emergency mask ordinance went out of effect on April 3. The governor's opened his statement. You've seen fit to keep this thing going. In August of 2020, the CDC quietly admitted that the 162,718 deaths attributed to COVID-19, that only 6% were actually COVID-only. And the remaining part was due to comorbidity with other illnesses. March 21, 2021, Fox News reported a comparison of reported flu cases in the last two flu season cycles. In 2019 and '20, there were over 38 million cases of flu reported. In this past one of '20 and '21, there have been a grand total of 1,822 cases of flu. Think about it. Our county and most of the world use the PCR test for COVID-19. Dr. Carey Mullis, who won a Nobel Prize for that discovery, said that it was never meant to be a diagnostic tool. Said that if you mess with it enough, you can make anybody have anything. The cycles that they're running, if you get over 40, 35 to 40, you're going to have over an 85% false positive. Well, I asked our Marion County Health Department Director what we were running here. The WHO recommends 25 to 30 cycles. He said we're running 30 to 35 cycles here. So that's contributing to that false positive. If these masks are so good and effectual at stopping this COVID, why are there no hazmat canisters placed in every school to take these dirty nasty magazine, I mean masks, and put them away? It's just, this is foolishness. I warn you not to even consider mandatory vaccines because each of them are untested, tested on us, and it's granted only under a state of emergency and therefore cannot be required for jobs, school, or entry into buildings. It's experimental and therefore also covered by the 1947 Nuremberg Trials, that you cannot experiment on people without their consent. And that's what's happening with this whole COVID mess. It is not a pandemic. It never has been. Please, you're educators, do some research for yourselves, and you will find out that we've been lied to. Thank you very much. God bless.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Patricia Schaefer?
Patricia, AKA PG Schaefer, S-C-H-A-F-E-R, 2015 Southwest 43rd Place, Ocala. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Gullett, members of the school board, thank you for the opportunity. And again, thank you for what you do. You're amazing, all of you. So I just wanted to start by talking about, and I mentioned this Thursday at the workshop, the statement that you read in the beginning, Dr. Gullett. One of the last part of it says, "We always, always," in all caps, "put students first." And so I'm going to challenge you on that just a little bit because it would seem that that's not necessarily true because at the workshop you were talking about, you're reluctant to eliminate those, the masks for the last, at that point, it was like 15 days of school because you didn't want to sort of disrupt the mojo of what's going on for the principals and what have you. And so it seems like you're more willing to keep the children in masks and to disrupt the lives of the adults. So that's concerning to me. And then, and why change when we only have 11 days left? I believe that when I counted today, it was 11 days. But that's because it's 11 days that children are breathing, as Lucy said, in these masks that they've been wearing for who knows weeks on end in nasty book bags and whatever, that maybe seldom get washed. And it's 11 days of classroom teachers having to police it. And I've talked to plenty of teacher friends who not only would like to not wear them themselves, are tired of 180 days of policing masks. And so it's also a positive way to look at it, that it's an 11-day trial run of parent, student, and employee and volunteer choice that has a great potential of going really well. And it's not really hard to change either because you just change a single word with regard to masks. You change it from mandatory to optional for all employees, students, parents, volunteers, on all campuses and properties. And then you send out a press release and an alert now, and boom, you started effective tomorrow. And so, and then also just a few other items of note. Have you thought about the fact that babies that were born in March of 2020 have spent over a year seeing the faces of the adults in their community in public settings? So mostly, they're probably strangers, but they've seen them in a mask. So mostly, they're probably strangers, but they've seen them in a mask. And how do you think this has affected their language learning or their social learning? Because language is not just auditory. You know, it's visual. They have to see those words being formed. And social, emotional learning is the same, body language, facial expression. So it's a part of education that they're not getting. So we're not giving them complete and adequate education because of masks. And are you aware that just a little over an hour or two, our South Polk County and Pinellas County have pretty large parent groups that are protesting today? And I forget which one, I think it's Polk County, but I'm not 100% sure. One or the other of them has actually retained an attorney and filed a cease and desist letter regarding the mask mandate in their county. And it seems that these, that county school boards apparently are, seem to think, and maybe it's true, and Attorney Powers, you would address that perhaps, but that the executive order 21-102 by Governor DeSantis doesn't apply to school boards across the state so that school boards can continue with tyrannical mandates and maybe even attempt to impose others, as I understand was discussed here at the workshop regarding vaccines and volunteers, which was very disturbing to hear. And so thankfully, Governor DeSantis signed a bill that would prevent that from happening. And speaking of Governor DeSantis, just today, just this afternoon, at a school in Jacksonville, and I quote, he said, "These kids do not need to be wearing these masks, okay? I'm sorry, they don't. So I'm humbly asking you to end the school mask mandate immediately and allow the children to have 11 normal days to finish off this school year on a happy, facially free note so that they can see the beautiful, smiling faces of their teachers and their friends, and they can head off into summer with good memories after what has been otherwise a difficult and very unusual year." Thank you so much.
Mr. Vernon Uhlinger?
My name is Vernon Uhlinger. I've been involved for many, many years. I want to thank the board for all of the good things and the hard work that you've all done. And being in the Tea Party, we've tried to follow the local community with the various boards of what goes on, and tried to educate the people who come to the Tea Party and try... And we've discussed the mask thing, and I 100% agree with what was discussed so far. And I, we're all educated people, and I think it's kind of, we look silly going around with all these masks on. I don't wear the mask when I'm out, and I see people driving in a car. But the little children, they're covering up their, part of their immune system. They build their immune system by what's out there that they, the air that they breathe and that, and that's how they, they're protected. And you're covering up the, and there's no proof that these masks doesn't do any good. I mean, they have, there's been pro and con on this ever since this whole thing started. It's ridiculous. And you're all educated, and, you know, I think it's time to get them removed and let the kids enjoy, and yourselves also. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Carter Rickett?
Last name again?
Rickett, R-I-C-K-E-T-T.
He's coming.
Mr. Rickett, you were outside, so I need to tell you just...
Oh, I heard. I got a monitor out there. I heard everything. It's Charles Rickold.
Rickold, sorry.
4540 Southeast 14th Street, Ocala, Florida, 34471. I got here kind of late. I don't have any prepared remarks. I was hoping to kind of just join with what some of the other people had said. I know there's a doctor waiting to speak that'll probably address a lot of my concerns. I've lived in this county for 64 years. Both my kids went through all the school system. I now have grandkids, and I'm here for them right now. This mask thing, we were sold a bill of goods, I'm afraid. What, 14 months ago, we were told just two weeks, oh, we need to flatten the curve. And now we're hearing the mask thing could extend on until next year, next Mother's Day. We're hearing that now. And I have every belief that next year, we're going to be hearing the same thing. We have got to break this cycle. We have got to pray about this. We've got to think about it. We have to critically think about it and think for ourselves. This group mindset that's out there, where we basically have two guys that we don't know, controlling the policies of our school system, of our economics, is crazy. So I would just ask that you people collectively pray about this, think about this, critically think about this, and be a trendsetter. I mean, our governor's been doing that, and he's become very, very popular because he bucks the prevailing wisdom that he knows is wrong. And I think he's probably going to be well on his way to a lot higher office, you know, because he's able to do that. So I would just ask you guys to consider, at the very least, making this mask thing voluntary. You know, if the parents want their kid to wear a mask, that's fine and dandy, but I don't think this needs to be mandated. And I just, let me just add this. My daughter is in the healthcare field, and she has a close relationship with a respiratory therapist. And she asked the respiratory therapist, "What do you think?" He said, "In about two years, you're going to see a lot of lung development issues because the immune systems of these kids and the development of their lungs, breathing this constant flow of bacteria, it's going to affect them for the rest of their lives." So I just ask that you guys critically think this thing through and consider voluntary rather than mandatory mask mandates. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Little?
Dr. Little? That's why we introduce ourselves. John Littell, Dr. Littell, at 1541 Southwest 1st Avenue. I've been a resident of Ocala for about eight years, and quite honestly, I'm exhausted. I think we're all kind of tired. But I've been on call 24/7 for the good part of 20 years. I'm an Army veteran. I've been married 32 years to a pediatric nurse. I've got five children, three of whom are teachers, one of whom is just becoming a family physician, almost done with her training. The other's a 12-year-old in middle school. I've worked hard as a husband, as a father, as an Army soldier in Guantanamo Bay, triaging kids, children with malaria, tuberculosis. My first patients at George Washington Medical School with HIVAs before we even knew what the heck it was. And I'm telling you, I've never been more exhausted than I am now because I've been on call 24/7 for every patient, from baby to geriatric age, who has any concern at all about COVID for the last year and then some. And so what did I do over a year ago? I learned how to treat COVID. I learned how to treat it, so much so that I just got a text on the way in here from the leading hospitalist in this town saying, "Dr. Littell, what's your secret? If this is true, we can cut the number of people dying from COVID in half." I said, "Guess what, bud? It is true. I've been doing it. No one has died under my watch from COVID." Number two, children. I was a high school teacher. Actually, I was a school bus driver. My mother drove school buses until she was 80 years old, single mom, four kids, my hero. All right? I know kids. I love kids. And when I see kids come in my office, and when I'm tired, I get emotional, so forgive me, but when I see six-year-old girls on my exam table refusing to take their masks off because it's been beaten into their brains that if they take their masks off, they're going to die because I'm a stranger, right? And I can get them sick. Dang, that hurts me as a doctor. When I see a little girl who I love dearly, I've seen this girl since she's three years old, she had got attacked by a pit bull in South Florida, had plastic surgery on her nose, goes to school, six years old, her teacher says, "Get that mask over your nose or you're going to leave this school." It's a wonder her father didn't do something, a lot of dads would. They came to me asking for a note. I had already given them the note. The teacher said, "Forget it. She's got to wear a mask. Her nose doesn't work anymore, for crying out loud." And yes, the earlier speakers, they sneeze, they cough. A gastroenterologist told me this afternoon, you know, Johnny said, "This thing, just take these things off the kids and put dirty underwear over their faces because it's the same thing. These things are filthy." I learned, this is a medical procedure, I learned to put this on at George Washington Medical School, I was trained by the nurses in the operating room, to wear this so I wouldn't sneeze or otherwise get bodily secretions from my mouth and nose into the patient on the table, not to prevent anyone from getting a cold, a virus, or anything like what we're dealing with. And Anthony Fauci knew that. So in closing, you are about a safe and nurturing environment. Don't wait to do the right thing. I learned my whole life from my mom, don't put off until tomorrow what you can do today. Our kids deserve the right thing. Be courageous, be brave. You guys can do it. God bless you. You have a tough job, but do the right thing. Thank you very much.
I'm not able to read your topic, sir. What is your topic on?
Actually, it's on critical race theory.
Okay, all right.
Five minutes.
I'm Gary White. 9280 Southwest 96 Court Road, Ocala, Florida, 34481. My last name is spelled W-H-I-T-E.
Thank you, sir.
My subject, and this, Dr. Littell, I have the greatest respect for. He's an amazing human being. He's working his tail off curing people. I had a, I'm a barber. I had a preacher that respects him greatly, and he went to his house because he respected the preacher greatly and got him ivermectin and got him hydroxychloroquine. And the preacher and his wife are on their way to recovery now, and it was just a miracle. And the man went, he's just gone up, over and above, and the information he's given you is absolutely spot-on. It's wonderful because I know everybody on this board, and this hasn't been confrontational. It's been giving you information that I believe you can really work with. The critical race theory is what I have found to be extremely important, certainly not any more important than masks, but very important for us as a people to continue living together. The critical race theory is a divisive, underhanded technique of the federal government to cause people to dislike other people. The critical race theory purports that one group of people is different than another group of people, and one group of people can be bad and one people can be good. This bill or characterization is going on under Cochran, our representative in Tallahassee, and DeSantis right now. We need to call them and support their position on stopping the critical race theory. It's almost as bad as a mask. It truly is. Dr. Yorn, this is what ought to be taught. Dr. Yorn of Hillsdale College stated that, "You are racist if I look at you and you're white and I make some decision about what you're about. Or I look at you and you're black and I make some decision about what you're about." You've heard of throwing a rug over, a blanket over everything? I don't know you very well, sir, and if I make that decision, I'm a racist. But I want to get to know you, and if I get to know you and I don't like you, it will have nothing to do with being a racist. And if you're white and I tell, and I make a decision about you before I know you and understand you, I'm a racist. But if I get to know you and I like you, or I don't like you, then that race has nothing to do with it. It's your personality. It's where you're from. It's what you're about. And in this very non-confrontational, I'm just trying to give you information that will help you steer our school away from the critical race theory. The government is actually paying different school system grants to put this decisive, this terrible destructive information into the hands of school teachers so you, they will be able to teach it. Paying off the schools to teach this terrible, terrible, totally undiversified, it's just unbelievable what is going on in this situation. Please, if I can ask, everybody that might be listening to this, call Governor DeSantis and call Representative Cochran and tell them to stop the critical race theory in our wonderful state of Florida, where we love all people and we get to know people and we make decisions on what kind of person they are by getting to know them and not because of the color of their skin, under any circumstance. And I don't have time. Thank you very much. Please know that I support the mask off. I just listened to a doctor that said he had 700, 700 people in his care at this point in time, 350 of them had COVID shots, and they were back in with COVID disease. Thank you very much. Love you all.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Ms. Myra Latson?
Good evening. It is with great pleasure I have this opportunity to address you. I did not know that on this very day would be the day...
Can you please state your name and address and then spell your last name?
Yes. My name is Maria Latson, L-A-T-S-O-N, and I live at 10411 Southeast 25th Avenue, Ocala, Florida, 34480. And what I'm excited about is I did not know on the day that I chose to address you that I'd be here on the same day that the young lady won the Black History Essay Contest. It was my child who was the first winner, who won it seven years ago. And you remember my baby. She knows him all the way back from middle school when he was a Mark Twain author, and they sent him to live in Mark Twain's house. And so I did not know that this would be the day that I was going to come to address you. I'm so proud of her. My son is a Bellevue graduate. And tomorrow, I'm flying to Texas because my son, who graduated six years ago, is getting a master's degree from the Texas A&amp;M School, George Bush School of Government and Public Service, to be a diplomat for the State Department, to go all over the world and represent little Marion County, tiny town of Bellevue. That's just my little informational for you. That's not why I came today. It just so happened it all coincided at this day. I'm here, like the other people, to talk about the health of children, but not because of masks. I happen to be the mother of a child, and I've got a history. I'm an agriculturalist, a farmer. I was an environmental health professional. I was the chief legal counsel for the Health Department in five counties in central Florida. So I know something about health. I have a degree in science. In fact, I got a couple of them. And so I'm here to address you because at this very moment, I am now studying to be a health and wellness coach and a nutritionist and a master herbalist. And my school class assignment for this year in nutrition was to assess the K through five school breakfast program at my local school and to write them a letter. I met with Ms. Tammy Alvarez back in February when I got the assignment, and she was very wonderful to share with me the menus. And it was my duty to assess what the menus were giving to the children to eat. And I want you all to know, I got 100 in the class, okay? So I'm telling you something that's been verified by my professor, and I thought it would be important as this last month of school that you all need to know that we have to change what we're feeding our children. Yeah, they're dealing with health issues from masks, but worse than that is the food that we're giving them. And under COVID-19, that breakfast that you give them, it has to give them sufficient nutrition to get them going. Having been a teacher of little children, I know that when you give them candy and sugar, you're going to have hyperactivity and out-of-control children. We, as school people, professionals, have to be very careful what we're giving our children because your own motto says you're creating a legacy. You don't know how true that is. The food that I eat is going to be what impacts the health of not only my son, but my grandchildren because of the DNA I'm putting into myself. So I've written a letter to Ms. Susan Johnson, and I, before coming here, shared this information with her. She is in agreement with me. She said she wants you all to know that they're doing the best they can. And I want you to know that Marion County School System is in compliance with USDA's rules, but USDA... But USDA rules has no consideration for what really a healthy body needs. To require two grains and a possible protein and the two grains is a honey bun, a waffle, a pancake, four out of five days a week, it's not proper nutrition. I've been an attorney. I'm still an attorney. I've been a healthcare professional. If I fed my child nothing but pancakes and sweet stuff every day, every week, you all would come with the DCF and ask me what kind of a parent am I? And that's the school system. Let me talk to you. There is a term called in loco parentes. You are the parent of the children. Please, I know, Mr. Powers, you've got a copy of this letter. Ms. Susan Johnson already has it. I want the school board members to look at it. I want you, Dr. Gullett, to look at it. I go into detail. There's another way to feed our children and still comply with USDA and get them the nutrition that their bodies need so that their minds can focus. How do I know this? Because I have a child that's shown not only me, but all of you because he stood here seven years ago and addressed this very body. And he's continuing to address not only this body, but he's going around the world. He speaks four languages now. Marion County, y'all can do better by your children. Feed them better. Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Members and Chair, Doctor. I visited you a couple of months ago, had a concern. And I see that there's been some legislative changes. I'm sorry, Daniel King, 12600 Southwest Highway 484, Denon, Florida.
Thank you.
Like I say, I'm still a concerned parent, grandparent, and we're still praying for the board. We were challenged when we were here before to, don't forget the kids. Because that's what we're here to serve, right? And I appreciate you hearing me again today. I applaud everything that's been said tonight. It's been, it's always kind of very informative. I agree with the mask. And that's what I want to talk about is not the mask, but the critical race theory. My concern is echoing what Ben Carson said. He dubbed the critical race theory a radical concept that it pits them against one another, as Gary said, pits them against one another in base of, basis of race and gender under the guise of achieving equity, equality. Governor DeSantis said Florida's civics curriculum, and it was, that passed recently, I believe, to make sure that we have politically, not politically correct, but historically correct information in the curriculum. As I understand it, with that, that bill, I forget, HB5 perhaps, I was talking about, to ensure the historical understanding of our country, not politically skewed understanding. I very much appreciate Governor DeSantis and his stand on many, many things in this country, in this state. I talked to my parents, or my dad anyhow, and others in Michigan and different places. And they're still so many locked down. And we have so much freedom here and I'm very happy and thankful to God for that. But I wanted to ask, what are we doing about the critical race theory when it is being pushed on us? And you, and I, last time I talked, we were talking about the, what were we doing with the transgender push against our girls? Well, my, how are we going to protect my granddaughters? How are we going to protect people doing that? And there's been some laws changed, some legislative process on that. And I'm thankful for that. But I wanted to do, what I wanted to ask is, how are we, as a, same question I asked before about the gender. And I was told that there was some guidelines set up. Mr. King, I believe you mentioned that, you thought that. The attorney suggested that things had changed because of the political climate. Why am I bringing that up now? Well, I'm going to ask you, has anything happened with that in the last two months since I addressed you? And two, the same question is for the critical race theory. How do we police that? I believe you all probably agree that it's not a good thing for me to say that I don't like blondes. I don't like black people. I don't like, but I do like educated people. And I'm choosing based on color of skin or those kinds of things. And we, I think that we probably all agree 100% with that. You can answer that or not. But that's my question for you. And I also wanted to throw out a challenge. The governor of South Dakota signed a pledge. And this is basically how I'm going to be looking at my politically elected officials. What, especially for the school board, it's the 1776 pledge to save our schools. And it says briefly, "To restore honest patriotic education that cultivates our children's profound love for this country. Promote curriculum that teaches all children are created equal and have equal moral value under God, our Constitution, and the law, and our members of national community united by our founding principles. Prohibit any curriculum that pits students against one another on the basis of race or sex. Prevent schools from politicizing education by prohibiting any curriculum that requires students to protest and lobby during or after school." Am I permitted to hand this out, pass this law?
I can take it for the board.
If you could look at it, it's the Hall of Fame, 1776 Project. You can look it up. I am going to look at all elected officials, kind of based on that. How that they, this is specific for school curriculum and I'm addressing this audience. But it goes way beyond those borders. How are we doing those kinds of things? So thank you very much. I hope I was clear.
Thank you, sir.
That's it? Okay. All righty. May I have a motion to adopt the updated District Emergency Management Procedures Manual? Moved by Vice Chair King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Cummings. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, the District Emergency Management Procedures Manual is updated annually and is used to provide the district with accurate and consistent procedures for handling disasters and emergencies that may occur.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the District Emergency Management Procedures Manual? At this point in the agenda, a public hearing was scheduled before a hearing officer for any petitions filed regarding the 13 courses approved by the board at the March 23, 2021, school board meeting. Since no petitions were.
Let me go ahead and stop you. We don't have a vote because the vote is on the emergency manual.
Oh, sorry. All right. Since no one, since no one has said that they would like to speak on behalf of the District Emergency Management Procedures Manual, we'll go ahead and ask if there's any discussion, board, and then move to a vote. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Mathieu Lopez. At this point in the agenda, a public hearing was scheduled before a hearing officer for any petitions filed regarding the 13 courses approved by the board at the March 23, 2021, school board meeting. Since no petitions were filed by the April 22, 2021 deadline, there is no need for the public hearing to proceed and staff may begin ordering, may begin the ordering process of the materials for the courses approved by the board on March 23, 2021. Okay. Moving forward with the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C9.1 to C21.1, with the exception of C13.1, that was moved to discussion? Moved by Board Member Cummings?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Campbell. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve item C13.1, Marion After School Programs, formerly known as Extended Day Program Fee Schedule for the 2020, for the 2021, 2022 school year? May I have a motion?
Is it?
Moved by Vice.
C13.1 is the.
Poll for discussion.
Okay.
Okay. Moved by Vice Chair King. Seconded by Board Member Cummings. Mrs. Campbell, I understand you pulled item C13.1. You wish to have further discussion?
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. We had conversation about this in our most recent work session where we talked about the rate increase of $5, which the cost to our employees is $2.50 per child per week. What we then received after that work session was the subsequent amounts that the Marion After School Programs will need on an annual basis to the tune of $350,000 more every year because of the minimum wage increase from Amendment 2. And so while we originally discussed to have this $5 increase right now, we had consensus for that. I did feel it was warranted because we do have additional information now that perhaps we need to have additional discussion because if they're needing to make up the cost difference this year, it looks like they may be coming back year after year after year to potentially bring up the exact same thing. Personally, if that's the case, I would like for us to discuss having a bigger hit now rather than raising the rates every year. So here are a few things to consider. Obviously, we must take into account that any rate increases to Marion After School Programs impact employees half as much as it does community members. And I understand from this board that they spoke loud and clear saying that our employees certainly receive first priority for Marion After School Programs. With that being said, though, Marion After School Programs then has half the opportunity to make up their shortfalls because of the 50% discount of all employees. While I understand any rate increase will be uncomfortable for any family, the fact is the cost of everything is going up right now because of Amendment 2. And that will eventually raise the minimum wage to $15 an hour. That program obviously is not funded by tax dollars as all of the other programs within Marion County Public Schools are. And they are at least supposed to break even. So I know that an argument can be made that obviously we're in a pandemic and this is a difficult time to raise prices. I do understand that gas prices are going up. Make sure you go fill up your tanks today. But I did actually look on Indeed.com just today and there are more than 7,000 job openings in Marion County alone. So while I understand that we are in the middle of a pandemic, we do have a lot of employers that are looking for employees. So if that's a cost issue, I'm not necessarily saying people need to work three and four jobs. I'm just making that point. And finally, even the modest increases proposed do not include site managers or site facilitators receiving benefits as employees of Marion County Public Schools. I'm not fully advocating for that at the moment. We're not even bringing that to the table. But they are part-time employees who are frontline workers with our children, some working up to 35 hours a week, like some other departments that do receive benefits at this moment. So I just think that it would be a good time for us to potentially have additional conversation if they are going to need to come back year after year for that $350,000 that they're going to need on an annual basis to meet that minimum wage requirement. Would it be better to take a bigger hit now or to just raise the rates year after year after year?
Thank you, Board Member Campbell.
I'm in favor of raising them year after year after year because it is a pandemic year. Our families have been hit with higher gas prices, food increases. And I know there is a plan for the $15 in the future, but that's not what they have now. And when I envision what many of the families in these schools are, it could be the single mama that has two and three children in these schools trying to make her ends meet. And my concern is, is looking at a larger scope of things also is if we put another burden, what is to keep the parents or whoever maybe care keeping these children home? Because it might benefit them to stay at home and collect a check rather than go to work and then try to pay for that. So I would, as the wages increase, I would like to see it increase that way. I hate to burden our families right now with another monetary thing with just, you know, the atmosphere in general. But that's my opinion.
Thank you, Vice Chair King. Board Member Cummings?
My, my suggestion to this is to not take a big hit right now. We've taken a big hit. Everybody's taken a big hit right now. I prefer to see some type of phased approach, if that's year over year. I just can't see us doing, if we say we're going to put students first, if we out-cost Extended Day, where are these kids going to go? We jack that price up this year. Because there'll be some parents that'll say, I just can't afford to put these kids in that Extended Day. And we could be putting our kids in a more dangerous situation. So I'm not for the big hit now. We do know, I think we need to have that communication with the community and let them know that, hey, it's going to go up. It has to go up because there is a shortcoming, shortfall for the district. But I just don't think this is the time and the year to take a big hit right now to families. I just can't see that.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. My input is, is that I'm looking at this through a wider lens than the school system. As the largest employer in Marion County, we were able to continue to pay our employees all through the shutdown. Many, many other businesses were put out of business. And many folks in our community lost their job for four, five, six months at a time. Got behind on rent. Now, you know, they were protected for a while. Now the job market is open and evictions are too. So I always try, even though I've been in the school district for such a long time, I always try to use a wider lens because it's not just our employees. It's the whole community that is impacted by the decisions that we make. So my thoughts are, is that incremental is the way to go. I want to support the families as much as we can. If there were two wage earners in the family and only one worked for the school system, then someone else likely lost their job for a significant amount of time. Yes, they got unemployment, but in a lot of instances, that took a long time to get. Or some people, it didn't certainly come close to making up for what they were earning before, yet the bills continue to pile up. So I do hear what you're saying, Board Member Campbell. One of my original questions was, you know, we, how did we get in such a hole of, and are we trying to, to raise prices to get ourselves out of that hole? And my understanding, Ms. Boston Ellis, I hope I'm explaining it right. Please correct me if I'm wrong, that we're not looking to recoup that loss by doing this. We're looking to, to balance the beam and not get under anymore. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So with that understanding, I am in favor of continuing to go in an incremental way, giving families the opportunity to save and prepare for the next increase, which we need to be honest, if we know that that's probably going to be coming over the next few years because of the increase in minimum wage, then we need to say so and give families a chance to budget for it. So those are my thoughts. Is there any more discussion?
Madam Chair, I thank you. I wanted to have the opportunity to have the discussion because we were presented with additional information after our work session where we did come to consensus. And so I felt it was important for us to bring it back up for discussion again. And I appreciate the position of the board. It does seem as if my thoughts are outnumbered and that's fine. I will go with, with what the recommendation is mainly because I know that we need to do it. I know that our Marion After School Program workers, they're going to have to make minimum wage at $10 an hour. We don't have a choice. I know the value of the program and the value of what they provide to our students every day. I see them every day. So I know the incredible importance of that extended learning that they actually provide for our students as well. So obviously, I'm in support of the increase now. I just wanted to have the discussion to see. We will be coming back next year to have the same conversation.
And thank you, Board Member Campbell. I appreciate your due diligence and the time that you put into looking into it further. Again, that's one of the strengths of this board, that we just don't take things at face value. We discuss it, we think it over, we ask for more information, and then we do our best to make our best decision. And it is a point well-taken going forward as far as benefits and so on for these folks. They truly are our after-school teachers. Our, many, many people in the community choose to send their kids to our Marion After School Programs. I'm trying to get Extended Day out of my head. It's been there for a very long time, so it's probably going to take a while to get it out. But. But it's a wonderful program, and it definitely deserves all the support that we can give it. They're just great people. Okay, so having no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All of those in favor for approving the Marion After School Programs program fee schedule for the 2021-2022 school year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $16,040? And I'm not going to ask for a motion now. I think I've finally got it. $1,040 to Bellevue Middle School from Bellevue Middle School PTO. Vertigo ground bucket hydroponic system installation and delivery valued at $6,000 to Hillcrest School from Marion County Hospital District. $2,500 to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks from State Farm and State Farm Companies. $2,006 SOB valued at $1,500 to Marion Technical Institute from Heather Howard. $2,500 to Marion Technical College from their business partner Jenkins Acura via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $2,500 to Sunrise Elementary School from their business partner Ocala Fiber Network via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Motion, please. Moved by Vice Chair King.
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I don't think this motion has ever not passed unanimously. Board Member Cummings, would you please do our thank you tonight?
We definitely want to thank all of these donations that come into our schools. We can't do it, as we heard earlier, with the partnerships. We cannot do what we do on a daily basis without great partnerships. So we thank all those community partners for these donations. I've seen some great donations come through here, and this is good. This is really good. So please keep up the good work.
Absolutely, absolutely. Moving on to Board Committee reports and concerns. Shall I go ahead with the meeting reminders? The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for May 20, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss COVID-19 updates if needed, five-year school plan survey, two of two, Military Choice Academy, and Evergreen Elementary top-two plan options. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for June 3, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss COVID-19 updates if needed, construction projects update, hurricane briefing update, annual equity update report 2021-2022, general insurance renewal review, special detail agreement, MCSO safe schools, and new charter school contract review. And we'll move on to committee reports, concerns, and comments. And Dr. Gullett, tonight we'll begin with you, and then we'll just go around this way.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I'd like to take a minute as we're closing in the last few weeks of the school year. And as you know, I meet with several, in addition to all the roundtables that I do internally and externally, I have several groups that I formed this year, one of those being Student Advisory Council that represent all of our high schools in Marion County. And I bring this forward tonight because I just had the last meeting with this year's group. And of that group, most of them are seniors. And it has been such a terrific year of great, honest conversation. When you think about, as you've seen tonight, our student voices and leadership is just indescribable. And these students have just been the voice of their peers. They've asked the tough questions. They've provided feedback. And I know that we've had great conversations, and they have been such an asset to me as a superintendent. So I just want to recognize that they do not know I'm doing this. I thanked them on our call earlier, but I wanted to recognize them publicly for their leadership. They have very, very bright futures and great plans ahead, and their families should be very proud, as well as their schools and their peers. So Alyssa Neves from Bellevue High School is graduating. Kylie Follett from Dunellen High. Elijah Alarod from Lake Weir High. Samuel Six from MTI. Adriana Essencio from North Marion High. Ainsley Nichols from Vanguard High. And Leilani Cruz from Westport High. Just want to give them a special thank you again for what great representatives of our school district and wish them the very best of luck. And I know, I've told them that they have to promise to keep in touch and to come back and be great mentors to our other students. So thank you for providing me the opportunity.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Dr. Gullett. That is, it's so exciting. There's a lot of good things happening in Marion County Public Schools. Attorney Powers?
Chair, sir, I have an item for clarification before the board, and that is regarding that tenth of an acre parcel of property at Anthony, near Anthony Elementary. As you know, the history of this was that we had agreed that we would extend the due diligence period, allow the seller to get some environmental testing done to determine whether we wish to proceed forward with sale. And that due diligence period is coming up to expire on March 25, or I'm sorry, May 25. Where we are as of now is that I was unable to discern exactly what the board's intent would be regarding an issue of the payment for the environmental impact study that we have. So far, we've done an initial impact study, which was $2,438. We've done a survey. We've done the appraisal. The due diligence costs thus far to the district are about $7,000. The property is approximately $70,000. This is a property which has some buried fuel tanks there, which may be of no consequence or may be sort of a deal breaker. The further testing that we would need in order to get at least an initial background that allows us to proceed forward with sale would be $6,200. The seller has agreed that they would split the cost with us if we choose to go forward. Otherwise, if we do not, seller, we would just, we would need to terminate the contract we have thus far. So as of now, the only other factor the board needs to consider, which the board would not be aware of at this point, something I just learned in researching all of this. Ultimately, long-term, we don't know what that property, what impact that property will have from its soil testing. The soil testing that we're doing now is not the end-all, be-all gold standard of soil testing. There was initial site assessments, which is what discovered the survey, the fuel tanks, things like that. The soil testing we would have, keeping in mind that this is a site which lies directly off the roadside anyway, and so it's probably had runoff for a considerable amount of time. However, testing on the site would tell us whether there is an immediate concern. Now, once we purchase the property, depending upon the use we intend to put it to, whether we intend to keep the building there, whether we intend to use it simply as additional parking, or whether we attempted to put a, intended to put a daycare center on it or something else, may in the future impact, and I can't say how that's going to go, what further testing and/or remediation may need to be done. So for example, as of right now, we could take some, have those soil samples done at the cost of $6,200, $3,100 to the district, $3,100 to the seller. We could have testing done, which would tell us, if it tells us the soil samples automatically show that it's in need of having removal, topsoil, and recompaction, then we would know it probably is something this board does not want to get into, and that's what the board has expressed previously. On the other hand, if that soil sample turns out to indicate to us that it is, that things appear to be fine, then in the future, depending on what use we have, the Department of Environmental Protection may choose to require us to do further testing, depending on use. That further testing would involve an angled drill which goes up underneath where the existing tanks are because the tanks were apparently filled with sand, which was the old protocol. They would fill them with clean sand, then just shut them off. Given that this is a quite old site, it's anybody's guess, but it's likely that it's not still an active problem, but who knows? That's the purpose of the testing. Now, the angled drill would go underneath the bottom of the tanks and would tell us then, underneath the tanks, which is truly what we need to know, is there additional contamination under there? That tells us much better than simply drilling a core eight feet down or something like that. So the future use of this property really is something that we will have to take into account and may require future testing as well. So I want the board to be aware of that. However, the question that I have for the board is, the clarification question is, do we wish to pay one-half of the cost for the additional soil testing at this time? Or do we wish to terminate the contract that we have had so far and say, we're not interested anymore? We're backing away. So I've spoken with Mr. Flanagan, who's our outside counsel, who's been working on this. They've spoken with the seller. It appears everyone's acting in good faith, but at this point, there's just a lot of, there's a lot of factors to be involved, and so it's difficult to, as I learn more, I can only bring it back to the board. And unfortunately, because of the way that we have to do things, it requires that I have to meet with you in this forum.
Thank you, Attorney Powers, for refreshing us on this project. And something that comes to my mind is, as far as the use of this property and remembering why we thought that we needed it, that getting it would be a good idea. I think it's important for the community to get a better sense of exactly where this property is in relation to Anthony Elementary School. And it's right next to the school. It pretty much almost goes into their parking lot. And there is a building there which could be used for a myriad of things. We're protected in some ways because it is near a school in terms of what businesses could be located there. So that's something to think about. And again, I just wanted to make it clear to the community what building we were talking about and where it was located in terms of being so contiguous.
Folks from that area know of it as the old thrift store.
Yes.
So.
Across from Anthony Pizza.
Right. I also should point out to the board, one of the things that came up in my discussions with Mr. Flanagan, our real estate outside counsel, was the fact that ultimately, if there were contamination, we haven't gotten any indication of it from any of our groundwater sites that we have nearby. There's been no indication of anything like that. Everything's been within normal limits. However, I don't know exactly what, how close they are to that site. However, he pointed out, contamination does not, if there is contamination, it doesn't stop at property lines. So that contamination, in the future, if there were contamination, there may still be something then that we have to get involved with attempting to rectify and remedy anyway. So, but at this point, to what degree it is a predictor, we don't have indication of contamination.
Board, thoughts?
So if they do that test, then we'll 100% know what the, if there is?
If they do the tests, we will know as of now whether there are any of the indicators of contamination that we would, that would prevent a sale, that would make it, that would make it likely that there'd be any future problem. From there, however, the Department of Environmental Protection may require, depending on what we intend to use a site for, there's a bunch of decision trees down that factor. If we wish to, if we wished to drill a pump or a well, obviously, that would, that may create a problem if we wished, or it may require future additional testing. If there were certain uses we intended to put the property to, then in the future, there may be additional testing required, and there may be remediation that would be required in order to use it in that manner. So what I mean is, if there was, I'm trying to think of a use that, this is not my, not my area completely. So if there were a use that was, that would need to rule out any possibility of contamination, then it could, we could still run into a position where we wanted to or needed to, for FDEP rules, remove, backfill, and compact that site anyway. If we were using that site in its existing state or if you're using a site later for a parking lot or something like that, extremely unlikely. But the best we can deal with is likelihoods and unlikelihoods.
So, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So then this test is really not going to be anything conclusive?
It's conclusive. It's sort of a phase one level or phase.
A top.
Maybe phase two. It's not the gold standard that does everything we would need. That would be only achieved by having a geographical, geographical survey come out and just actually do an angled bore drill underneath the existing gas tanks, which requires ground penetrating radar to find out exactly where they are, and then getting up underneath them to test soil from underneath. And at that point, we're talking about sort of prohibitively expensive testing. Or not prohibitively expensive, quite expensive for.
Half the cost of the property.
Yeah, I mean, we, it could be significantly more expensive than this $3,100 we're talking about.
So we could, if we did this and potentially down the road, like you said, depending on this land use, we could still end up spending more money, like you just said, half the cost of the property. And what I'm saying, it could possibly be a money pit, basically.
Right. What I've, what my understanding in asking the same questions you are is that in a sort of worst-case scenario format, we intend or to use the property for something that requires DEP approval at the highest level. DEP requires us to do some specific testing. That specific testing goes up underneath the tanks and finds that there is contamination. That contamination shows there's still hydrocarbons in the soil at an unacceptable level. So in order to use that property, we now have to bring in heavy equipment, dig the tanks up.
Excavating.
Excavate, put new drill in, compact and everything, at which point you're probably talking about an equivalent amount of the cost of the property that we have now. So that's if everything went wrong and we intended to use it for a purpose that required it.
Attorney Powers, what would be some examples of what we would require that level of testing for? What type of projects?
The only thing that I was able to track down so far was that if we ever intended to actually drill on-site for a well or something like that, which I don't believe is part of the intent, or if we had a, there's some restriction in use if we were to be using it for, for example, a playground, whereas right now, we have a semi-per, or a non-permeable structure on top of it. We have, it's a capped-off, you know, concrete pad on top, so it can continue to be used as is now. I could not answer that question very well as to what future uses might require more. However, the Department of Environmental Protection retains the ability through its administrative code, which is quite lengthy, and even Mr. Flanagan couldn't answer that question sort of outright for me. There may be some uses in the future. Sort of, sort of the attorney disclaimer here, there might, you might run into some use in the future that you will have problems with if testing indicated that it was, that it was bad. Now, initially, the testing we're talking about doing right now, that testing is sort of what I, I'm just going to term it phase-two testing because we did an initial environmental survey, which told us there's a potential problem. This would give us quite a degree of comfort, I would say, that we either are in the clear or we definitely are not. That, what the environmental specialists that is, that we talked to that was doing the actual testing, the question that I had for him through Mr. Flanagan was, is this all we're going to need to do? Is this the gold standard? Does this fix everything? His response was, no, depending on what you want to use it for in the future, you may just be getting started if it was a real, if there was a real issue. So I would have to speak more at length with him regarding all of the possible details of that. But question for now is, do we wish to do the, we've put about $7,000 in for. But, question for now is, do we wish to do the, we've put about $7,000 in for the appraisal, survey, environmental study, and legal costs to date? Do we wish to put in the additional $3,100 and proceed from there with the sale? And that would, we'd extend our due diligence period to make that happen over the course of the next couple of months? Or do we wish to back out at this point?
Okay.
Or, I can get questions from the board.
You're so thorough.
I can get questions from the board, or I can have, I can, I can have you vote to extend our due diligence period, and then have somebody, I can do research myself through this environmental engineer, or have somebody come in and talk to you about it, to answer some questions for us. But, at this point, I'm not sure that you're going to get anything more. The best you're likely going to hear is, there are some uses where it could possibly be a problem if these situations occur.
Right, right, okay. I'm clear. Let's remember too, Board, what we originally went into this property, thinking about usage. And those of us that have spent time around Anthony Elementary School during car line, and when teachers are trying to park, including parking on someone's private property on the side where BJ's Diner used to be, you know, and that caused a problem. It's a safety issue with those cars, Old Jacksonville Road, I mean, that road used to have nobody on it, and now people are driving light, there's a lot of traffic. So that's how we started this conversation, to thinking more in terms of using it as a parking lot, and then also to secure that it won't be built into something that we wouldn't want right next to Anthony Elementary School. Are those other businesses, are they all on well systems, or is there a town pipe that they're on, like Anthony Pizza and Anthony Elementary School? I can't remember if they're on a well. I mean, I know Reddick is, right? They're on wells because of the, yeah. We've had a lot of conversations about Reddick wells, but I don't remember any conversation about Anthony. So I would want to know about the water system, because, point taken, that if we ever needed to dig a well for any reason, but, which I doubt that. So, I don't know, after listening to what you've said, I'm kind of thinking more, could we extend the contract a little longer? Because I think that having that property, as long, for what we wanted, what we said we wanted it for originally, is still viable, but that's me.
Either way, I do believe that the next step is going to be that if we have an interest in retaining, keeping the contract open, the only thing we can possibly do is conduct the additional survey. Otherwise, it's a completely moot point, and we need to terminate the contract. And we don't want to go be in breach of the contract and simply not do anything.
Correct.
I need to file a letter of termination.
Correct.
So, we need to either choose to terminate, or we need to choose to do the testing, and then if the testing comes back in our favor, we still can choose to do it or not, but, you know.
Understood.
If I recall, Attorney Powers, our counter actually was that this environmental testing has to happen, and that we were not going to foot any of the bill. That was our counter.
Well, and I reviewed what we said, and I could not gain 100% clarity as to whether that was the board's...
Consensus?
Intent and consensus. It appeared that, I mean, that was mentioned, it was discussed. Clearly, as far as any, the board felt that as far as any remediation of the site, we did not want to get into paying anything toward remediation. But although it was mentioned, I could not garner a clear consensus as to whether, because we didn't even know at that time what the additional cost of any testing would be, whether it was going to be exorbitant or minor, and, you know, $3,100 isn't minor, but it's probably not also exorbitant, given the type of contract.
In comparison, on a percentage basis of a $70,000 property, $3,100 is, you know, more than if we were buying a $350,000 property.
Right.
So, just putting that out there. This board member is in favor of the counter, that if this environmental study needs to occur, and if we are to purchase this property, you need to tell us what the environmental study said, and I don't think we, as a school district, need to fork out any more money on this property. My thought is that regardless of whom they choose to sell to, they're going to have to do this study regardless, especially if environmental agencies get involved as soon as a sale happens, then that's going to start alerting others to start paying attention and monitoring this piece of property. So what I would prefer is, if in fact we decide to move forward, at least extending the contract, that we ask that this environmental study happen and that we don't foot the bill.
It ain't on me.
Right, and I can...
I think, I think it's a money pit. I think you're going to end up with some things down the road. Initial tests have kind of said that. I can't see us footing that bill either.
But would we like to know, I mean, I guess...
We know it's a tank under there, and we know the tank was filled with dirt.
Sand, right.
We know that there's a huge potential that the ground beneath that is contaminated. We know that, we already know that, and we already know that preliminary tests have said that there are some issues with the ground. That's why we asked for it.
Right.
Was it preliminary testing there were issues with the ground, or just the fact that there's tanks there and...
The fact that it's present, and that it was a former gas site, and we didn't know exactly where the wells, or exactly where the tanks stopped, because there is a, there's kind of a side road, that it's like on a little fork, a little V. So, if in the future, we needed to do the more invasive testing to dig up underneath them, we'd have to find out exactly where the limits of that are, because all we have right now is simply the fact of the knowledge that they're there. We don't have an exact detail of a...
How big is this piece of land?
One-tenth of an acre.
And he wants how much for it?
Seventy thousand.
But, when you look at what acreage is going for in Marion County right now...
It's the, it's the main thoroughfare of...
Not in Anthony, though.
Yeah.
It's an acre.
Right, with a building on it.
Seventy thousand dollars. That has a tank up on it that was a gas tank.
I don't want us to pay any more money.
You know, it's too bad that there's no grant funding available through the EPA or something, you know, for the sake of the children, that they would just go in there and clean it out for us to protect our kids. That's probably reach, but, came across my mind. All right, Vice Chair King.
I agree, I don't think we should spend any more money on this either. If they want to pay the entire 6,200, then I would still consider it, but if they're not, I don't think we need to invest any more money in this property, knowing already what that entails.
And what may lie beneath.
And what may be like, yeah.
Yeah.
So...
It would be great on a safety standpoint, you know, to have the land, but not at a boondoggle-type project...
Yeah.
Complication. So I think you have consensus that...
Thank you, very much.
They pay for it, or no deal?
I appreciate it, thank you.
So, the consensus is that they're either going to pay for it, or we're going to send a letter?
Right, we'll, I will indicate to them the following. I will indicate to them that we, the board is not going to pay for a share of the environmental testing, that's non-negotiable, and that if they wish to conduct the environmental testing and give us the results of the same, I assume that the board would be willing to extend the due diligence period for us to complete that testing, which would take about two to three weeks. So, if they're willing to do that, then we can proceed forward, but my understanding is that we've talked through this, that's not going to have, I mean, that's not going to happen there. We're told that that's, that's the, this is their counter, and this is, this is where they are, so. But if they were to come back, rather than have to try to track down the board again and put you all through this again, great way to end tonight, I'm sorry, the most boring part for the end there, but I would need to, yeah, I'll set it up, if they choose to absorb the cost themselves of the environmental impact study that we need, then I'll, I'll have them extend the due diligence period past the 24th that we can get it done, because I think you have a, our next board meeting is the 24th or 25th, it's the, it's right around the same time, so. All right, thank you very much, Board.
Thanks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers, and yes, on a $600 million budget, maybe 70,000, it seems like proverbial chump change, but every penny counts. So it's good that we had this conversation, and I think everyone's comfortable with the direction, so thank you. Okay, Ms. Martinez-Lopez, anything for us?
Yes, Board members, I had forwarded you an email from Mr. David Hurley regarding your request for the inter-local meetings, so I just want to let you know that once Mr. Hurley has reached back with me with some meeting dates, I will bring them to a work session or a board meeting, and then we can look at our calendars and see who wants to attend and who will be part of those meetings.
Great, great, and that's the joint meeting that we're initiating with the County Commissioner?
Commissioner.
Okay, great.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Awesome, thank you. All right, Vice Chair King.
Yes, I just have one item tonight, and that is in reference, I guess, the teachers and the principals are going to be receiving $1,000 from our governor, which I think is wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Every one of our teachers and principals are worthy of that. But what comes to my mind when I hear that is that every one of our employees are valuable, and our schools would not be open without every single employee here. You know, the bus drivers that get our schools, get our students to school, our food service workers that feed our students, our secretaries, our paras, our payroll departments, the, appear at the beginning, you know, when they, sometimes Ms. Masrally, there's different people, when they answer the phone, and they're like Marion County Schools. Every one of us have an important job to make us an effective and running school, and they did it during a difficult time during a pandemic. And, you know, I do know that in the past, you know, when a school receives school recognition dollars, it's a wonderful time, and I've also been involved when sometimes it's not always an easy process, because, you know, the teachers or whoever could decide, and it, they weren't always looking at everybody, or if people were at a school, they moved and they didn't ever see a penny, even though they worked their tails off that school year and not receive anything. And when I think about that, it's, I don't think it's good for the morale of our district. And so, I was just wondering if there was any way that we could look at how many other employees that are not, that don't fall in the principal/teacher category, and if we could come up with some kind of bonus for them. And I'm talking about, you know, not just for everyone, you know, for everyone that showed up and was here, because, you know, and we could maybe create some boundaries and rules, because, you know, there's probably going to be different scenarios where it's like, well, maybe you really weren't here, you know, and, but for those that showed up. So I don't know what the board thinks, or even if Ms. Boston Ellis can maybe find something. I'd really like us to look at that, just to make sure that we, you know, work with all of our employees and their morale, because I think that could just be a hit, you know, and they, everyone worked so hard this year.
No, no, Vice Chair King, you hit something that we talked about. When all of this started last year, we talked about it, because there were some people that did not stop working, there were some people that were delivering meals that were on buses and vans and stuff, and we talked about trying to figure out how to, to show our appreciation to those folk that kept the wheel turning on this bus, because this bus never stopped, it kept turning the whole time. So, and you're right, I think oftentimes, we, we single out certain groups to acknowledge and recognize when there's a whole bunch of people that are making this thing work. So I'm with you on that. I think, I don't know what we can do, I don't even know if it's feasible, I know Ms. Boston Ellis could figure it out, if it is, it isn't, she's going to let us know, but I think that we do need to show some type of appreciation to some folk that were here every day, that they did not, they didn't, they did not stop, they did not stop, and you still have people that are still in that same category right now. We got to make, we have to show our people that we really care, we have to do that.
That money talks, for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Boston Ellis, would you mind coming over, coming up just for a second? Because I think Dr. Gullett has some input too, because I'm also wondering, I'd like some clarification on where this money is coming from, what funding source for this bonus, and also, have there already been any guidelines put into place of, you know, we tripped over this, but what's the definition of a teacher? Is it a classroom teacher, is it a guidance counselor, is it a media specialist that has a teacher...
Good evening.
It gets money quick.
Right, good evening, and we are still waiting for technical assistance. We do not know if the dollars that Chair, Vice Chair King is talking about are, if they're coming directly from the governor, or if this is dollars that are coming to the school district to disseminate, as we did the teacher salary allocation, but Dr. Gullett and I have been talking about this, this morning, this afternoon about this, and I let her talk about it, but she said the same thing that you said, that we've got to find a way to provide some sort of remuneration to other employees that the governor neglected to include in his... So I'll let her talk about that, but we're still waiting on clarification. We do know that that money is coming from what we call S R 3, that's the A R P, and he is pulling out of our allocation those dollars, not just Marion County, but all school districts, he's pulling those dollars out to provide the bonus for teachers, classroom teachers, as well as principals. And so we have not seen our allocation yet, this was just something we got probably yesterday or the end of last week. But I think, I think I answered all your questions in terms of, what do we know? And we want to be very careful about sharing with you only what we know, not rumors, but that is, the governor has said he will pay teachers and principals bonuses out of that pot of money, and we have not seen it, and we don't know what our allocation is.
Okay, okay, and I'm thinking also about clarification on technical assistance, does technical assistance from the state mean that that's basically putting in writing how they're telling us that...
Exactly.
We get to spend the money?
Yes.
Okay.
It is technical assistance telling us the process of how those bonuses will be provided, it's telling us what our part of it is, and then how we have to report it. So if they provide the funding to us, and say, you've got to allocate it to these specific people, then more than likely, they'll give us a template, we have to follow their process. And I'm sure they'll say, you have to develop the parameters, so they may look at, you know, what's a classroom teacher? We go through that all the time, and then go from there. It appears that if there's a bonus that we can give to teachers and principals, we should be able to use those dollars, but we do not know right now the extent of that.
He did say, and I'm just asking, maybe y'all can help me, I know you haven't got anything yet, he said teachers and principals.
Correct.
Does that include assistant principals and those? Because the way I read stuff, I'm reading it literally, so...
Dr. Gullett, do you want to speak to that?
Because it didn't even say classroom teachers and principals, it was just teachers and principals.
And then you have, you have people that are in the classroom that are teaching that are not...
Correct, right.
So, I mean, we need kind of, yeah, thank you, I'm sorry.
No, I, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, of course, Ms. Boston Ellis always does a great job of providing the information. Everything's been covered, but yes, the American Recovery Plan, we're still waiting for the details, and if you do read the language, which is what we were processing today, I read it much like Vice Chair King, like you've described with recognition dollars, it's written in the same language, so if you look at historical knowledge and look at how it's interpreted, principal being literal, and teacher being, as I would equate to, having the class load, the FTE, right, assigned to those teachers, so if you've followed past practice. So, we are waiting anxiously to get more details on what that looks like, but the conversation was absolutely on, as you all have said as board members, all employees, all employees, and the amount of work that it's taken, it's truly taken everybody to work together through this very challenging year. And so, we will continue to keep you posted, but I can tell you as a superintendent, I will advocate, and we will find every means possible to recognize monetarily and bring to your proposal to recognize all the employees that have done that work, especially in our schools that are working on the front lines with our students and on our buses and all those places.
Thank you for bringing that up, too. We just talked about it today.
I must have got the message somehow.
Sure did, absolutely.
But before I move on to, I also want to say, because I did give some examples, if I did not give your example, please do not take it personally and think that I am not thinking of you. I should have said all employees, but I wanted to give examples of why every one of you are so important, so I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that, because sometimes we know how that goes. So anyways, that's all I have this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair King, Board Member Cummings.
Good evening again, everyone. Again, last week, we celebrate teachers' appreciation, and I just want to again commend all of those who are classroom teachers, but again, there is a group of people that are in the classroom that are teaching, and we need to make sure that they know that we appreciate them as well. I think oftentimes, we kind of differentiate, put a line between people that are in the classroom that are teaching, and just because...
that are teaching. And just because they may not have the degree or may not be doing it as a certified teacher, we still need to acknowledge those folk because they do a wonderful job. We have some folk that are subs that have been there, permanent subs, that's been there for long term. So I just want to make sure that we acknowledge those folk as well. I do want to thank namesake Eric Jose Miguel Angel for my tag from College Park Elementary. So, which camera am I on?
That's so nice.
Which camera am I on? Whichever camera I'm on, y'all got me. So for, thank you, Eric. I think this is a good one for me. This is a good one for me. So we appreciate that. Do want to remind everyone that on next Saturday at Howard Middle School, thank you, Principal Rembert, they will be doing vaccinations again at Howard Middle School, open to the public, no appointments needed. Just walk up the one shot for those that want the shots. And then, on a serious note, and I'll be through, last week, two weeks ago, I was at North Marion Middle School. We had a young man that got, that died in a car accident. And while there, we talked to the kids about making choices and making good choices and so that they can live a good life. And while they're talking about choices, Principal Ellis shared some things with me concerning some things that are going around district-wide in our schools concerning drugs. And then a couple of days after that, I got a call from a parent whose child was given some candy at one of our local high schools, and she thought it was just regular candy. And come to find out, the candy was not candy. It was drugs. And this kid had to go to the hospital and really thought they were about to lose their life. One of our students. And in the conversation with Mr. Ellis on this, there's some candy that go around that's out there. And I talked to the principal at the high school, I won't say the high school, but I did talk to the principal and made him aware of the situation. These candies look like regular candies. And these kids need to be aware that this stuff is, if somebody's giving you something just to give it to you, they're trying to see, they're trying to get a giggle or something out of this, and it's dangerous. Also, in talking to Mr. Ellis, he shared with me, and I think Mr. McFadden sitting out, these kids are walking around with this little packet of cereal. Looks like Cheerios. And I think you all should have gotten that email. It does, it's not Cheerios. It looks like Cheerios. If I was a classroom teacher, I would walk by it every day thinking that these kids are snacking on Cheerios, but it says Cheerios, and it's cannabis. And it has the little B on the package, and it looks like, just like Cheerios. However, these kids are getting this stuff, and it's in our schools. I'll be glad when we can't bring certain things on campus, and they'll be, but it is what it is. We just need to be, make our parents aware of this. Parents probably are seeing this stuff and not even knowing what it is. These kids may have a backpack full of candy and not, and thinking it's just candy, and it's not. So as a community, as a school district, we have to let those things, when we become aware of it, we need to let it be known so that we can do the best thing, is keep putting kids first and making them as safe as possible. So, so if you're seeing the Cheerios, if you're seeing the candy, parents, ask questions. At my house, I, there is no privacy at my house. There is no privacy. I pay the bills there, so I get to say everything. So, so parents, I know kids say, you're in my room, you're in my space, but it's about trying to keep these kids safe. So, so please, let's end on a good year. Let's end this thing well. We've come so far with so many challenges this year. Let's not get taken out by some candy and some Cheerios. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. We are so close to the finish line, and we want to really celebrate graduation this year and have everybody survive it, for sure, always. Board Member Campbell.
Thanks for bringing that up, Reverend Cummings. It's all about choices, you know, at the end of the day, and whether people are making positive choices for themselves, or people are making negative choices to impact someone else. And sometimes that's what's happening. And we need to just be mindful of that and try to stress positive choices. And one positive choice was what, I'm going to pronounce this name probably wrong, Avalon Labonte is what I'm going to say, from Madison Street. It gave me my license plate. And there are some beautiful zebra long-winged butterflies on here, as well as beautiful flowers, and the seal from the state of Florida. This is mine, so anybody can see that. And I know that last board meeting, a couple of our other board members got their license plates, but we didn't check our mailboxes, so we're doing ours tonight. So yes, we're spreading out the love. And I love that partnership with Jenkins Auto Group. I was grateful to be a part of that for a little while, and we approved, or saw a business partner come through tonight that we were approving the donation that I also helped spearhead a couple of years ago whenever that happened. So that's always really cool when things come full circle. But I also want to mention a couple of things. Tonight, we did approve in our consent agenda a couple of new job descriptions that more closely align with what those people do. As Chair Thrower was mentioning, doing our due diligence as Board members, as we all do. And so I wanted to ask of our Executive Director of Human Resources, what did the previous job descriptions look like? And the interesting thing that I was able to determine is that actually all of these different professionals had the same job description. There wasn't actually a catered, targeted job description to tell what they needed to do in these various areas. And so I'm grateful that we're starting to align our human resources practices with good human resources practices, where if a person is put in a job, especially at a high-paying job, like what these individuals are at the director level, that they have a job description that will align with exactly the responsibilities that we're asking for them to have. And so I'm grateful for that. Also grateful for all of the citizens that came out tonight that were speaking and exercising their rights. I know I've received multiple phone calls on this same issue and emails, as I'm sure all of you have as well. I am looking forward to the future conversations that we're going to have about what this will look like for our students in the future. As a communications professional, understanding how valuable nonverbal communication is, I also am very concerned about what that looks like for our students and how they have been growing up and learning. And it's not just here in Marion County. It's all across this country, and frankly, all across the world. What that will look like for these students and how they're going to be able to express themselves and understand what expression actually is and look like, I hope that we'll be able to get past it. But thank you to all of those folks who came and exercised their right to speak tonight. As we're talking about potential monetary increases for all of our staff members, and I also am in full support of whatever we're able to come up with. And I don't know legally what we would be able to do, but I wonder if there is even an opportunity to approach our business community to help partner with us. I mean, they help partner with us on schools. I don't know if they're able to help partner with us in some way that could offer gift cards or something again. I don't know the legalities on that, but we would certainly need to explore that if that is a possibility, thinking outside of the spectrum of what we're often able to do. If we don't find the money or resources, how else could we potentially still do that? And I'm all for whatever we can come up with. And finally, it's just a busy week, you know? I think I'm on the Department of Health call tomorrow, and I know that we have the Insurance Committee meeting, I believe is tomorrow as well. And I'll be proctoring I B exams and participating in award ceremonies, and then the Career Signing Day. So the job of a school board member certainly is not just sitting in these meetings twice a week, or twice, four times a month. So I'm, but I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here, and I truly consider it a blessing to be a part of the school district and all the decisions that are being made. Thanks.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. It's really uplifting, and I share your enthusiasm. It's an honor and pleasure to be of service to the Marion County Public Schools. It's certainly the culmination of my career, and it's been just an indescribable year. I can't begin to describe it. There's been so many things, so many great accomplishments within so much pain. I'm glad you mentioned Career Signing Day because career and technical education has always been very close to my heart. I love that we're celebrating our students that are, you know, moving into the world of work, and it really proves that we've gotten our kids ready to take their next step, you know, right out of high school, regardless of their path. So that's something that I'll always continue to champion. And yes, when it comes right down to it, I was thinking about this puzzle piece that I have here, hopefully still on my lapel. And to me, it really does represent, from our master board training, that all of us as board members and leadership team, you know, we're pieces in the puzzle. And it's a mighty big puzzle. We've got 43,000 students. That's a lot of pieces. We have 7,000 employees. That's a lot of pieces. We have countless parents and caregivers and grandparents that are helping raise these kids every day. And then we have interested community members and supporters and citizens. So that's a big puzzle with a lot of pieces, but every single piece is needed to make the full puzzle and make it turn out right. And I continue to be so optimistic with the partnerships that we're beginning to build and the communication that we're putting into place. And yes, it is messy, and at times it doesn't always go right on the first start. But we're making progress, you know? We're going forward with an enthusiasm that, to me, is almost unbelievable, considering what everyone has lived through. It really has been almost like a war, in a way, when you think about how people have been affected, how so many families have been affected at some level. I think every family has been affected at some level by this virus. And so to me, it's a testament to everyone's wherewithal. We have not cracked, you know? Maybe cracked a little, but we haven't broken. And we're still here swinging tonight after another passionate and spirited meeting, and we're still smiling. So that, to me, speaks volumes for the incredible team. And when I say team, I mean every single piece in this puzzle. So I thank all of you. And unless there's anything else, then we'll have to move on to student disciplinary matters.
I do have one more thing.
Yes, ma'am. I'm glad. We need a different segue.
I do have one more thing, and it's external operators. I know we had great discussion on this last Thursday. And sometimes when we're presented with a lot of information, I hear things, and it was, kind of, things just kind of went in and out kind of quickly. But I had some time to reflect on what was said. And when I looked at our two top contenders, which were both very, you know, good, it was T N T P and Learning Science International, one thing stood out when I reflected back with the T N T P. And that is that they turned the schools around in a year. Yeah. And there was three different examples of that school being turned around in a year. And we know with Oak Crest that we are short on time, and we need that year. So I'm not sure what the thoughts of my board, or the board, not my board, but the board, I'm not sure what your thoughts are. I know where I stand. I know I was listening last week. But I, with looking at the data and listening, you know, again, I think we might want to reconsider with the T N T P just because of the timeframe. And they were also the top contender, and that stands for something, too.
That'll be coming up for a vote at our next board meeting, correct? Which is the?
Madam Chair, yes, that's correct, on the 25th.
24th.
Madam Chair, I too, I start looking at that, I was looking at it, it was, they were saying it so fast. But I was looking at the data as we were going through it as well. And I know Ms. Connor sent us some information that verified kind of what I was looking for. And I think we, I think we probably do need to kind of have another discussion about it, either at our next work session before we do have that vote, because the data, we, Oak Crest has one year right now to get it right. And the recommendation from the Board was for one group, and then we went beyond the recommendation of that group and went somewhere else. I think there's a reason that group chose one and two. They weren't bad. They were close, but not that close. So I just think we just need to have a little bit more discussion about it. Yeah.
Sounds like a plan. It would be great to all be unanimous in our decision. And the best way to get to that is to continue to talk it through until we're all at a comfort level and to share our, whatever new ideas we have and research that we want to point out at our next work session. We have time, right?
Certainly, Madam Chair. We could bring it back if it pleases the Board on the 20th to discuss again. And I'm looking to Elena for clarification. I believe on the 25th, we would be bringing the contract for whichever external operator the Board chooses. So I just want to clarify that point. That would be bringing the contract, correct, Elena?
Well, if we have a discussion on the 20th and it changes, then the original contract was for?
L S I.
Right. L S I. So if we change on the 20th, I don't know how quickly turnaround time, Mr. Powers would be able to get a contract with L S I. So that would be?
With T N T P?
With T N T P, excuse me.
Well, we may want to put them on notice that we're still discussing and to get a contract to us.
We would need to put that under administrative briefings when we have that on the 20th.
Certainly, we can do that. Yes. We can do that. Thank you.
It's so expensive, and there's so much riding on it, and there's so many intricacies. There's just, it's just a lot. So I'm welcome having more time to think it over, have another conversation, and make sure we're as solid as we can be and by the grace of, never have to be in this position again.
Chair Thor, and Chair Thor, I know you're on that committee.
Yes.
And I know you guys work real hard, but I just know that we've spent, in the last few years, we've spent over a million dollars on external operators.
Oh, yes.
We got to get it right. We can't just keep throwing away $300,000, $400,000 away and not getting the results that we need to get. We have yet to, we have yet to hit that mark with any of the external operators that we had. Maybe we would have hit it prior pandemic, but we haven't. So we got to be, we got one year to get this right.
Right. And that is frustrating. And I'm glad that you raised that point, Board Member Cummings, because we only have so much control over what happens. We try to assemble the best team, and then we have to let them do their thing. And when other circumstances come into play that are beyond our control, that kind of derail, it's incredibly disappointing. It's very frustrating. And then here we are, left with the price tag. And so the whole model is just something that I know we're all looking forward to not having to deal with ever again.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we're clear on what we're going to do? Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that Board members have received the alternative placement list for students through April 21st, 2021. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, bad, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion then to approve the expulsion of student J D 21-055, J D 21-057, J D 21-058, J D 21-059, and J D 21-062 with educational services for the remainder of the 2020, 2021 school year and the entire 2020, 2021, 2022 school year? May I have a motion?
Move.
Second. Moved by Board Member Cummings, second by Vice Chair King. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
A move.
All right. Moved by Board Member Campbell, second by Board Member Cummings. Meeting adjourned at 7:59 PM. Thank you very much.